Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. Held this Monday, October 4th, 2021, in council chambers and livestreamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be Monday, October 18th, 2021 at 7:30 PM. If you would, Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastanzic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers is absent. Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden is absent.
Both Ms. Warden and Mr. Myers did tell us in advance they would not be here. We do have a quorum, albeit that anything that would be required to be passed by emergency, by suspension of the rules, I should say, is not going to be available tonight because we do not have six. Nonetheless, the agenda will remain as presented. At this time, I'd ask you to stand and join the members of the city council in reciting the Pledge of the Looms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to approve the minutes of the council meeting held on September 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Cavan to approve the minutes of the 29/20/2021 meeting is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And those minutes are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome. I think we finally had a beautiful weekend for the Worcester Fest. We didn't have buckets of rain as we normally do.
Absolutely right. President Biden, thank you. Council members, nice to see everyone this evening. Here's the report that I put together for this evening. Hopefully, I can get through it in good time. I hope you were all able to stop down to the Worcester Fest downtown event over the weekend. As President Biden said, it was beautiful up till the last band, and it rained a little bit as that band just came on. But overall, it really was a very nice event and fairly well turned out too. So the credit for that from our side is our PPM team and our REC team. They handled really all of the goings on and were a part of the committee that put on Worcester Fest. So our thanks to them and to all involved. Really, the Chamber of Commerce is the group that puts on Worcester Fest, and we truly thank them for their efforts over the years to make that happen in our community. If you were downtown this past weekend, you will have noticed our final quad of the square streetscape project is finished, except for some minor punch list items. It was fully open and functional for Worcester Fest, and it will be a wonderful complement to the other quads of the square. Thank you to Roger Koberlarsek and his engineering team for keeping things on track with this project to make sure it was ready for the Worcester Fest event, and to our PPM team for smoothing over some of the punch list items that weren't quite finished. We were backlogged on some of the turf that was to come in, and they improvised with some indoor/outdoor carpet that was stapled down to the frame. And I'm sure most people did not even notice. So they did a really nice job of keeping things moving forward for us. It's hard to believe that it was just our last city council meeting that Ben Maybaugh, president of the Worcester Brush Company, was present presenting their plans for the development of their new facility off of Daisy Way. They have spent the last week moving dirt with as many as five big pans, cleaning dirt and leveling the site every single day of the last week. So it looks totally different now than it was a week ago. So if you get a chance, take a drive out past Daisy Way, because you'll notice another thing. Skanel Properties has started doing their building for the distribution center. Last week at this time, it was a slab of concrete on level ground. Today, I went past after work just to see where they were. It looks like somebody just dropped a building on it. They have a new technique they were using where they actually laid the slab, poured it, and then sprayed a covering on it that kept the cement from sticking, and then poured the walls on top of the slab. And then they brought in a huge crane, and it's lifting those slabs into place, and the walls are probably two, two-and-a-half stories high there. So it's pretty phenomenal. So if you get a chance, take a look at it. So both of those projects are moving along well out off of Daisy Way and our High Hill Industrial Park there. Also, Clear Creek Park is paving the trails this week, so that is moving forward well. The pavilion is the one thing. It's on a boat somewhere out there waiting to be delivered. So we're hoping it comes in in a decent timeframe, but you've heard all the stories about the backlog and shipping and getting product. And so we're sort of at mercy on that. This project should be done by the end of November, though, for the Clear Creek Park, unless we have a delay with the pavilion. The COVID is still strong in our community. Our hospital is seeing as many patients in-house now that we have since this whole COVID thing came about. So they are still fighting the battles out there. The severity still doesn't seem as strong as the first time through, but there definitely have been fatalities with this wave, and it's just how each individual reacts to it. So it's still, we're not out of the woods yet, but our hospital is handling the load. We've never had anyone turned away because of not having the facilities to service them as a patient. You all should have had a memo last week from Joel and Andre about the ARPA funds. So that's something I spoke to Mr. Ansel about, and I think he will maybe be making a motion after we finish up with this report. We need to, we want to use those funds. We need to have a plan on how we're going to that matches in with what will be recognized by the federal government, that is a direction we can use those funds. So the Finance Committee would like to hold a meeting, if the Finance Committee would like to hold a meeting, going over the potential uses. And there was a graph on the back of that memo that was sent out, sort of pigeonholing where we think might be good places to place those funds. But if you wanted to hold a Finance Committee sometime in the next two meetings or so, that we would appreciate that. The deadline was originally October 31st here, which was, you know, what, 25, 26 days away. They've moved that now until April 30th of next year. But what we do want to do is use it to help us plan our budget that we're going to be presenting to you in the second meeting of November. So that's why we'd like to have a Finance Committee meeting if possible. I must end my report on a bittersweet note. You all, I'm sure, have known or met and worked with Andrew Dutton, our city planner. He has turned in his resignation and will be leaving our city on Tuesday, October 12th. Andrew started with the city in February of 2013 and has been a great asset to our city team and our community overall over the last eight-and-a-half years. He was involved with some major 10-year plan updates for our city, the comprehensive plan update back in 2013 to 2014, the downtown plan, 2014 to 2015, planning and zoning guide update June 17th to, in 17 to June of 2018, and the amended zoning guide in 2019. And he served as my appointee to the Wayne County Land Bank Board, which has been a great vehicle in restoring or being able to take down problem homes. So I really appreciate Andrew and all he's done for our group, and really like him as a person, so we will miss him being a part of us. He came to us from Canal Winchester, where he'd been their planner for 10 years. He's heading back to his hometown, Medina, Ohio, to be their Community Development Director in charge of planning, building, and economic development. So it really is a nice position and goes right along with what his background is. He and his wife and their two children live in Medina, and we were sad to see him leave, but we wish him the best in his new career in his hometown. And that's everything I have to report to you there, Mr. Biden and city council members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have three petitions tonight. Two are from Speedway at different locations, and the other is ones from Worcester Local Foods Co-op, which is known as Local Roots. If you would please read the first petition, Mr. Paulo.
Ohio Division of Liquor Control, Speedway LLC, doing business as Speedway 1200, 1970 Cleveland Avenue, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They're looking for a C1 permit class.
All right. Just to refresh your recollection, we can request a hearing in our county seat, which would be here in Worcester, or in Columbus, or we can waive a hearing. What's your pleasure?
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive the hearing?
Mr. Ansel.
Yes.
Mr. Bastanzic.
Yes.
Mr. Cavan.
Yes.
Mr. Sanders.
Yes.
Mr. Silvestri.
Yes.
All right. We'll waive the hearing. If you would notify them of that, I'd appreciate it, Mr. Paulo. And then we have a second Speedway permit petition.
Speedway LLC, doing business as Speedway 9219, 110 South Beaver Street, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They are asking for a C2 and a C2X permit class.
Okay. As you know, once again, we can have a hearing here in Worcester, one in Columbus, or waive a hearing.
Motion to waive hearing, Mr. President.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sanders. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Bastanzic.
Yes.
All right. The hearing will be waived. Again, would you notify them of our decision? And our last one, if you would, please?
Worcester Local Foods Cooperative, Inc., doing business as Local Roots Market and Cafe, 140 South Walnut Street, Worcester, Ohio 44691.
Again, you can decide to have a hearing here in Worcester, one in Columbus, or waive the hearing.
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cavan. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing, motion to waive hearing?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
And Bastanzic.
Yes.
All right. The hearing will be waived. And again, Mr. Paulo, please notify the Department of Liquor Control of that waiver. I don't see anyone signed up for communications from the public on agenda items. Any committee reports, although I think you wanted to announce a committee meeting?
Yes, consistent with the mayor's overview of the ARP, a funding allocation and proposed budget impact associated with those $2.7 million of funds that were earmarked to be received both next year and the following year. I would request a 6:30 Finance Committee meeting here in council chambers prior to next Mondays or to Monday's council session.
So you mean October 18th?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And we have no public hearings tonight. And Mr. Sanders, who more than adequately filled in for me, I see got through all the agenda items last meeting. Thank you very much for filling in. I appreciate that. So we'll move on to new business. If you would, Mr. Paulo, read Resolution Number 2021-55. It's slated for three readings and will be presented by Mr. Bastanzic.
Resolution Number 2021-55, a resolution authorizing the mayor to pursue appropriation of certain property interests from property owners adjacent to or abutting Melrose Drive for purposes of proceeding with the improvement thereof and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bastanzic, the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. This resolution is to authorize filing procedures in court for certain properties on Melrose Drive, which have not come to an agreement with the city of Worcester for temporary or in some cases permanent right-of-way easements for the Melrose Reconstruction Project. As of today, 35 properties have reached an agreement with the city with eight properties still outstanding. As you can see, there's been about four more properties coming into an agreement since the, this resolution was written and given to us. So it's still an ongoing process. I would like to keep this on first reading. Well, we can't, we don't have the votes here to go in third and final anyway, but I'd like to still keep this on first reading today. And if Roger has anything to add on that.
No, I just, the reason for it is, we're still talking to the people, obviously, but the reason for it is we would like to just keep this on track and bid it out first of next year. So in order to do that, this is one of the steps.
All right. Well, we'll consider Resolution Number 2021-55 as having its first reading. That brings us to Resolution Number 2021-56. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri. I do note that it is budgeted, so will not require suspension of the rules. It does require me to look to Mr. Paulo and ask her to kindly read the title.
Resolution Number 2021-56, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of the water line on Bauer Road and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So there is a two-inch galvanized water line on Bauer Road currently. It has a history of breaks, and it did fail flow tests recently. So the proposal is to enter into a contract for, to advertise according to our bid procedures and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder to replace that with an eight-inch ductile iron water line. It's going to also replace five water surfaces along the path and four fire hydrants. And again, thank you to Roger for all of the engineering design, construction administration, and inspection work that his office will perform for the project. As was mentioned, excuse me, that being said, if there are any questions, when we've voted to move this forward, Roger is here to answer any specific questions. But with that, I move for adoption this evening.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastanzic. Any further discussion? I'm surprised, galvanized water line.
Yeah, there's still a few of them left in the city.
Yeah, but next thing you know, you'll be telling me you find a few wooden ones yet.
We haven't. We dug them up.
I know.
Yeah, so it started out at two inches, probably about three-quarter now.
Yeah. I get it. Well, seeing nothing further, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Bastanzic.
Yes.
All right. Resolution Number 2021-56 passes. Turn our attention to Resolution Number 2021-57. Again, this will be presented by Mr. Silvestri. It is also a budgeted item, so will not require suspension of the rules. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title?
Resolution Number 2021-57, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise for bids and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the replacement of sanitary sewer lines and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, I turn the floor back over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the last legislation was for fresh and clean water, and this is the not fresh and not clean water. This is the sewer line replacement. But it is for an area from Christmas Run to a main trunk line on Brookside Boulevard. It does involve replacing approximately 216 linear feet of an existing 10-inch vitrified clay sanitary sewer pipe with a new 12-inch sanitary sewer pipe. And we're also going to replace three sanitary manholes along the way. And again, this is also part of this year's budget. So with that, I move for adoption, Mr. President.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders.
Yes.
Silvestri.
Yes.
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
And Bastanzic.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-57 passes. Next piece of resolution, our next piece of legislation is Resolution Number 2021-58. This is slated for three readings. It will be presented by Mr. Bastanzic. Mr. Paulo, would you please read the title of this legislation?
Resolution Number 2021-58, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for the resurfacing of Columbus Avenue, Bell Avenue, and Cleveland Road within the city of Worcester and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Bastanzic, the floor is yours.
Thank you. This resolution will authorize advertisement and award a contract for resurfacing paving repairs in 2022 for the following streets. Bell Avenue from Liberty Street to just north of Bloomington Avenue, Cleveland Road from Diller Point to School Court, and Columbus Avenue from the Southern Corporation Line to Liberty Street. And as usual, this project includes milling of existing surfaces, adjust manholes and water valve boxes to grade, and placing new asphalt and pavement markings. And again, as well, the engineering, construction, and administration inspection will be performed in-house by engineering staff. I know we always say that our engineering is done in-house, but I think it is worth remembering that this does save the city of Worcester a considerable amount of money over time. I think every once in a while, it needs to be brought up. Estimated cost of these paving projects is $1,050,000 with $536,000 and $500, I'm sorry, three, I'm sorry, $536,568 paid for by ODOT, large city funds, and $513,432 from City of Worcester funds. Comments? Roger?
No, it's good.
All right. We'll consider Resolution Number 2021.
This is not a budgetized, so I would like to put this on third and final so they can, I cannot do that?
We need six.
Oh, that's right.
So I would gladly entertain your motion, but I would be violating our own council rules. So anyways, can you, can you wait until?
Two weeks.
18th, Mr. Koberlarsek? We don't need a special meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. This is our yearly ODOT.
Right.
You know, yeah, we're good. We just want to bid it out in November.
Sure. I think we'll be on track for that. All right. We'll consider Resolution Number 2021-58 as having its first reading. And our last piece of legislation this evening is Resolution Number 2021-59. It'll be presented by Mr. Silvestri, like the other two that he presented. It is budgeted. He got off lucky tonight. Before I get back to you, Mr. Silvestri, Mr. Paulo, would you read this title, the title of this piece of legislation?
Resolution Number 2021-59, a resolution authorizing the Director of Administration to advertise according to law and enter into a contract with the lowest and best bidder for redrilling well number three at the North Field Well and providing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Silvestri, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, these types of requests don't come forward very often, and thankfully so, but every now and then, we do have something that fails, and we have reason to have to re-drill one of our city wells. So thankfully, I don't think any service was interrupted at all. But one of the screens failed on our third well in the North Well Field, and so it also caused some gravel to go up into the pump, and we're just going to have to re-drill the whole well. So again, this has lasted us 70 years. That well went into service in 1951. So, and we've already solicited, I think, some quotes for the project, and we want to bid this out and, you know, make sure that we evaluate all options, get the taxpayers the best value while re-drilling this well. So with that, I move for adoption.
Okay. Motion to adopt by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any other questions?
Out of curiosity, how deep is the well? That's always a curiosity point.
Yeah, this well, 65 feet, the screening is at 53. So what started as what we thought was a routine motor failure was not a routine motor failure. So we were able to get a camera down there and find that the screen and all the stone, that's what got sucked up in, and the casings shot too. So where we're going to approach this is, it's a current eight-inch with a 1,300 gallon per minute rating. That's what it's rated at now. We're going to drill this as a 12-inch just for the future to give us flexibility if we want to put a bigger pump. That well field out there, it's, we have a luxury of riches with two well fields, and that one, given, you know, as shallow as it is, we've got, that's the capacity out there. So it's one of those. Can't call it emergency because I've got five other wells out there, but we'll go ahead and get it moving in this direction.
Good. Thank you very much for that.
Well, see if you can get them to promise 70 years out of this one. Although no one will be around to remember that, promise 70 years if, it does last that long.
But we should, we should, we should have that expectation.
Yep. Good enough. Yes, Mr. Silvestri.
I did want to bring that out, just the fact that, having been a little familiar with wells in the past, that's a very shallow well, which means that we have a real rich aquifer, and Worcester has really been blessed with tremendous sources of water. Other communities, I know it's even constricted economic development because they haven't been able to find, you know, as plentiful of water sources we have here. Thanks.
Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel.
Yes.
Cavan.
Yes.
Bastanzic.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
And Silvestri.
Yes.
Resolution Number 2021-59 passes, brings us to the miscellaneous portion. One person signed up. Ms. Houston, would you please take the podium? And state your name and address and what you're here to discuss?
Linda Houston, 1823 Burbank Grove, Worcester, Ohio. Several council meetings ago, I would not consider this one of those, but I had asked Mr. Scavelli to get me the rules for the president of council, so I just would like to read them. Excuse me. The president of council will be elected at large for a term of four years, which will be concurrent with the term of the mayor. She, he will preside at all meetings of council, but will have no vote except in the case of a tie. And I just want to mention that this meeting and the last meeting with Mr. Sanders, the president of council, in fact, did what the rules consider. There have been a few other meetings where that has not been the case. And that was, I don't think it was last meeting, but the meeting before, when Mrs. Warden and Mr. Cavan were going to vote against what other people were going to vote for, the president of council. The president of council chided them, told them why they shouldn't do that, and I remember thinking that was not part of the president's order. So I just wanted to mention now that this evening, and even Mr. Sanders did an excellent job as well. He only spoke when there was time for him to bring up his areas, so, thank you.
Okay, we'll just start out with Mr. Bastancic and we'll end up with Mr. Cavan.
Just, oh, just one quick thing. I'd just like to give a shout out to one of our local businesses, JAFB Brewing down on Bell Avenue has won a couple of prestigious awards for their beer at the Great American Beer Festival in Denver, which is arguably one of the most prestigious in the country. Their, their Hefewisen, out of 200 entries, got the gold medal, and they have a, an ale, pale ale called JAF, and that won a silver medal out of over 400 entries. So they, they are becoming a nationally known brewery with some very high quality stuff. I just want to, just give a shout out.
Thank you.
Not that I go there very often.
Well, I, I'm like, kind of like Bill Clinton, you know? I, I've tasted beer, but I've never swallowed it.
No, but he's won some other awards from them before.
I know.
And, and it's relatively young brewery, so.
Yeah, and it's not been around that long.
Exactly.
So they've come up and they're just, just innovative and have done a great job and nice little feather in our cap here in, in Worcester, Ohio. Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add, Mr. President.
Mr. Ansel?
Nothing additional, Mr. President.
Mr. Silvestri?
Nothing, Mr. President, thank you.
And we'll give you the last word there, Mr. Cavan.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Linda, for speaking. No, no harm, no foul. I didn't take umbrage to anything, but she brings up points of contention, so it's nice that she has a forum to convey those ideas. Thank you.
All right. I see Mr. Ansel's moved to adopt, or moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Silvestri moved as seconded, and all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Or adjourn.